Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the Northborough School Committee Open Meeting of Wednesday, March 4th, 2020. It is 7:02 PM. We'll go ahead and get started with the first thing on our agenda tonight. We have the public hearing for the FY '21 budget.
So I'm pleased this evening to present to the committee and the community the FY '21 operational budget. The Northborough School Committee is committed to providing an exceptional educational experience for all students in a cost-effective manner. The district believes that strong partnerships with parents, the community, and the town government are essential in developing a fiscally responsible and educationally sound school budget. The school committee utilizes its budget priorities and the mission and the vision of the district as guiding principles throughout the budget process to develop a budget that supports an exceptional education for all students. Copies of the FY '21 school committee voted, and approved line item budgets are available online at the central office and at the Northborough Town Offices. I'll be providing a total of the FY '21 budget subcategories by function classification as part of the public hearing process. And I'll begin with regular education. So function classification, which is administration, which consists of school committee, superintendent's office, assistant superintendent's office, district-wide administration, finance and administrative services, legal services and administrative technologies, $885,174. Function classification instructional leadership, which includes supervision, principal's office, building technology, teacher salaries, teacher specialist salaries, instructional technology, technology specialists, substitutes, library and media salaries, professional development, textbooks, instructional materials, instructional equipment, general supplies, instructional services, classroom instructional technology, instructional software and guidance services Function classification other student services includes attendance services, health services, transportation, student activities, and athletics, which totals $1,068,293. Function classification operations and maintenance of buildings, which includes custodial services, custodial supplies, heating, electricity, telephone, gasoline, water, sewer, maintenance of grounds, maintenance of buildings, maintenance of equipment, networking, and telecommunication and technology maintenance totals $1,625,302. And fixed charges and contractual obligations, which includes rentals and leases and contractual obligations totals $989,805. So the total regular day program totals $17,411,274 or a 4.9% increase. And I'll just share with the committee and the community that fixed charges and contractual obligations, because we are in contractual negotiations, that $989,805 consists of a pool of money that we will distribute once we come to an agreement around contract Next, I'll speak to special education, which parallels regular education. So the first function classification is administration, which includes legal services and administrative technology totals $35,000. Function classification instruction includes district sheriff supervision, director of student support services, assistant directors of student support services, assistant to special education office instruction, teacher salaries, professional development, textbooks, instructional technology, and psychological services totals $6,35,589. Function classification other student services, which includes health services and transportation totals $747,657. Function classification operation and maintenance of buildings, which includes maintenance of equipment for special education totals $5,800. And function classification fixed charges and contractual obligations, which includes rentals and leases and contractual obligations totals $2,186. And the last function classification is programs with other school districts, which includes tuition out and tuition out collaboratives totals $1,476,911. So the total special education budget equals $8,303,143 or a negative .4% increase. The FY '21 operational budget total with regular education and special education is This represents an overall increase of $785,859 or a 3.15% increase over fiscal year '20.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
And then we'll open it up for any questions on the public. This is a public hearing, so if there's any questions at this time. Seeing no questions in the audience, we will go ahead and close the public hearing for the FY '21 budget. Thank you. Moving on to our next item, we're going to action on minutes. Two sets of minutes in our packet.
I move that we...I move to approve the meeting minutes for the open meeting of February 5th, 2020.
Okay. Want a second there? Any discussion?
My name was spelt wrong at one point. I don't know if that matters.
We can amend it. Keith, do you want to make an amendment to your motion to include that?
Yes.
I will second that amendment.
Okay. All those in favor? Great. Well, moves forward, approved with the amendment of spelling Kelly's name right in this section where there's a typo.
And we apologize.
It's an E-Y versus Y. It's not a big deal. It was spelled right everywhere else.
Thank you for catching that.
I also move to approve the executive session minutes of February 5th, 2020. To approve and retain.
Retain, all right. Second. Any discussion? Okay. All those in favor would approve and to retain the executive session minutes of February 5th? Great, that passes. Thank you. Move on to new business. We have a legislative update.
So just a quick update. MASC's 2020 Day on the Hill is scheduled for Tuesday, May 5th, and this is a great opportunity to meet with our local legislators and talk about our district priorities. The topic of the Day on the Hill is moving forward with the Student Opportunity Act, and the featured guest speaker is John Keller, political analyst from WBZ News. So Cheryl will be sending out a reminder, and if you're interested, let her know, and we'll sign people up. The next update is the Student Opportunity Act plan. So as we've discussed many of our meetings, the new Student Opportunity Act was passed into law, and as part of that law, one of the requirements is to create a plan of how we are, as a district, are going to spend our additional funding that we received. We received $46,200 in additional funding than we had anticipated. So we have a student opportunity plan that we're required to submit to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education by April 1st. The plan really speaks to a budget priority, which is to fund professional learning around reading, specifically Orton-Gillingham. So it funds Orton-Gillingham training, professional development. It also funds a .5 inclusion teacher, which is part of our budget, who will have, will look for a person to hire who has specific training in Orton-Gillingham. As part of the plan, we do require to have stakeholder input and feedback. We have not done that yet. The plan template and direction from Desi just came out. But since we need to vote that this will, if you vote it, we'll actually do the stakeholder input and feedback. But I can share with you with a high degree of confidence that we have some, a good sense that this is an important initiative for us, and we've spoken with NSPAC as well as other families that this is something that we need to move forward with. So my goal would be to have a committee vote this evening, and then I would also engage other stakeholders in making sure that they approve the plan.
When you say other stakeholders, would that be teachers, other admin, parents?
So Marie Allen has had a chance to review the plan to make sure it's aligned with our budget priorities and our budget. This is a conversation that Marie and Student Support Services has been having over a period of time. We already have a cadre of people who are being trained, so it actually aligns with the work. In terms of parent stakeholders, I was actually thinking of reaching out to NSPAC and actually meeting with them and talking about the plan. That would be my primary community stakeholder group that I would reach out to.
I think that's great. I mean, we've heard a lot about, I know that there are at least one or two teachers who are trained in Orton-Gillingham, and it would be great to have more of that knowledge within the district. We've heard it's a need from some of our presentations, Marie, that you've been talking about, so that sounds like it's a good, a good move.
Were other ideas thought about or discussed, or was this like the top, like right?
Well, quite frankly, what we did was we looked at, because we found out about how much additional funding we were going to receive after the budget. So we really looked at what was included in our budget already. So, and this was a major initiative. So this is, we try not to create new work, but really spend the funds with work that was already underway. So this, I think when the Student Opportunity Act plans came forward, this was our immediate first thought, quite frankly, because it was a need. We had identified, the school committee identified it as a budget priority, and we had identified it as a need in terms of the work we need to do as a district.
Right.
And I will, I will share that it's, we did not have a lot of time with a rollout of these plans. It was not as if we had months and months to consider. It was more like a week, so.
And this is something that if we had the money in the budget originally would have been done, and now that we get the extra money, it's...
The Student Opportunity Act plans are three-year plans as well, so we'll have a chance to revisit this on an annual basis. So we'll look at where we are in the budget process next year.
Will we get this money for a year?
And we'll get...
Or it's...
We should get additional money, we're just not sure how much. And I, we probably could predict around the same amount.
So this will be revised each year with a new amount?
Correct.
And you'd have a chance to revise even your plan of action?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then we are to expect a parent survey to come out before April 1st, before we send it off?
No, so this, one of... So was how would we...
You're going to reach out to...
Well, one of the, we did use the strategic plan survey data.
Okay, so we already did that, yes.
That we collected.
So we've done that already.
We've identified, that was identified as one of the areas as a...
So it's not a new survey?
No.
We already had one that was existing that was used.
Correct.
Okay, that clarifies what, for me. Thank you. Great.
So we need a vote to approve the plan?
Yes.
Yep. So I move that we approve the Student Opportunity Act. As discussed this evening.
All those in favor? Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is Assistant Superintendent/Search Committee member. So I have tried to convince Rhoda Webb to stay on as Assistant Superintendent. However, she has declined multiple times, so I thought I would keep trying, but she has shared with me that she is excited to return to her English language director position. And really what's important for me is that she continues to be a member of our key leadership team, which she will be, so. Are you sure?
Last chance. Starting next week.
So we, this evening is actually the last, March 4th is the last day to submit interest for serving on the committee, and just a conversation around who would like to serve on the committee from, and represent the school committee in Northborough. So, and Kelly?
Kelly, volunteers?
I volunteered if there's no high other...
Sounds good.
Nobody wants to duke it out with me.
Tag your it.
That would be great, Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you.
And the work will begin next week. And we have over 40 applications, so we have a number of candidates who are interested. And I always remind myself, we only need one, the right person, so.
I want to thank Rhoda for her work that she's done as an interim Assistant Superintendent. Just want to make sure that does not go unnoticed. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda.
And you still continue, committee hasn't formed.
Okay, going to be old business. Move on to Peaslee Principal/Search update.
So I'm pleased to share with the committee that Dr. Mary Coakley has officially accepted the Peaslee Principal position. I'd like to thank the search committee and all the members who participated in that process, because I feel like we really have landed an outstanding person to be Peaslee's next principal. Dr. Coakley has earned a doctorate in teacher education and school improvement, a master of science degree in teaching and learning and technology, a bachelor of science degree in early childhood, and an advanced graduate studies degree in educational leadership. So she comes very credentialed. She brings 11 years of administrative experience and eight years of teaching experience as an elementary educator and as a K-8 mathematics coordinator. And through the hiring process, it was evident that she possesses the ability to provide strong leadership through a positive approach that inspires all children to achieve. And Dr. Coakley will begin her new role April 27th, right after April vacation. So I think we're very excited about her joining the team, and I'd like to thank Kelly and Alana for participating in that process.
Rhoda was there too.
And Rhoda. The entire committee.
Yeah.
And currently, we have two interim principals, two retired interim principals who are serving in that capacity until Dr. Coakley can be in. So Bill McSheehy and Ed Kaufman, and they have done this before, and they have, I think, over 40 years of principalship experience between the two of them, and they've had a great first week so far, so all is well.
So they're working as a team?
Yep, so they're working as a team, so they, they job-share a couple days a week.
Okay, great.
And they did this last year in another district.
Together, the two of them?
Yep. So they have their communication systems down, they have their routines down, and...
Good cop, bad cop.
And they, yeah. And they bring a real positive attitude to the work, and so I think it will, it will be a nice transition for Peaslee School.
So next we have the enrollments.
So in your packet are the monthly enrollments. No significant variances from last month, and we also provided the shaded, the light yellow for the projections for FY '21, the classes that are capped. So you can see we have quite a few classrooms that are capped, but if you look along each column, we still have space in each of the grade levels at other schools. And we continue to monitor kindergarten closely as that was the grade level where we needed to add a classroom teacher over the summer. So, some significant changes to enrollment. And then the FY '20 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report, I'll have Becky stick to that.
So included in your packet is the FY '20 Monthly General Fund Report as of February 29th, 2020. There's no significant variance from the previous month. At this point in time, we have 1.27% remaining on the budget or $317,785. Last year, at this time, we had $207,411 or .85% remaining. So we are reviewing open purchase orders and working with administrators to determine the status of their planned purchases at this point in time.
I move to accept until audited the Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report for FY '20 20 as of February 29th, 2020.
My second? All those in favor? Great.
And then in your packet is the FY '21 budget calendar. So we're progressing right along the milestones. So I believe the next major milestone is town meeting, which is April 28th?
27th.
27th, from 7:30 until 11:30, so.
We have the meeting with appropriations.
Yes, actually, that is the next milestone. So this Saturday, we're meeting with appropriations. No, so 8 o'clock in the morning on Saturday at the town hall, so that is our next milestone. Then town meeting.
Oh, I'm going.
Joan is going.
Joan said she was going to go, yeah.
Probably make it to the first hour.
Okay.
Have breakfast with you guys.
Eat and run.
And then next in your packet is the FY '21 School Committee Approved Budget. That is it for the superintendent's report to the committee.
Okay. So educational policy, we haven't done it this time, and we have some policy development in our distribution. We have a first reading of a few different policies here.
So we have a first reading of sexual harassment in school, A100; disposition of executive session minutes, B210; and conflict of interest, B260. And all of these policies have been reviewed by legal counsel and are a first read.
Is there any discussion on the first read ones? Any comments? So we can go ahead and bring those back for a second reading?
Yeah.
As a consensus is.
Do we have another question?
I'll have to check with Cheryl in the morning, and I'll have her send out a reminder. And if not, we'll schedule one before our next school committee meeting. Then we have a second reading, bullying prevention and intervention policy, A150. And this is a policy that we're trying to keep in parity with Southborough and Northborough-Southborough. And this is a second reading, and it's the will of the committee to vote to approve.
Were we also going to review them again? Since you said you're trying to keep it consistent across all three districts, were we going to review it at combined? Or was it intended to vote in our individuals and then bring it to combined, or bring it to combined, and then vote in individuals or...
So this policy is going to each individual committee?
Okay.
But it is, it is the same, so, from each committee.
All right. Unless they decide to change it.
So that, yeah, so every policy, subcommittee has met around this policy, so it is identical.
Okay.
So I think we're in pretty good shape with this policy.
Okay.
So the version we have here with the, that's still all redlined and marked, is the proposed final version for alignment with the other district?
Correct, yep.
So if it's the will the committee have ordered on that this evening, we can.
I vote to approve the bullying prevention and intervention policy, A-150, as presented in the packets.
My second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great, motion passes.
The next policy is Rehabilitation Act Compliance, A130, and legal counsel is recommending that we rescind this policy, that it is no longer a policy that is required by the committee.
Obsolete.
Obsolete.
I motion to rescind the Rehabilitation Act Compliance Policy, A130.
Seconded.
All right. Any discussion?
So, yeah, we talked about this, Kelly, Greg, myself, at the last policy meeting. It's just general law, so it's not really...
It's already on the books, you don't need to...
It's just extra paper at this point, where we don't really need it.
All right, sounds great. All those in favor? Great, motion passes.
And then the last policy is just distribution of reviewed policy. So we reviewed sexual harassment in the workplace, A110, and again, legal counsel reviewed it and made no recommended changes. So it's just for distribution.
So the next thing we have on the agenda is audience sharing. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to share this evening? No? Okay. Anybody looking to share today?
I'm first. So March is shaping up to be a very busy month. This week, we kicked off our school-wide whole-month reading challenge, where students are reading throughout the month, collecting books, collecting minutes, and we're displaying their reading on the bulletin board. So the office has been a very busy place with kids checking in with their books and getting their punch cards punched, and pictures being put up so we can share what we're reading as a school community. I want to thank Kelly Gannett today for helping to fill some shoes as we kicked off our enrichment, our second round. We had cancellation with the presenter, and Kelly stepped in and ran a STEM activity until next week, until we can resume, and she was amazing, and the kids loved her, and I think had a good time by all, so I want to thank Kelly for that. We have all-town band starts next Wednesday, which is very exciting for our fifth graders to come together with the other three elementary schools and practice together, and then they'll perform in May, which is always nice to see their hard work and how they come together. We also have family math night across Northborough and Southborough for K through 5 on the 12th, so that's next Thursday. So if you are around and want to see a great night of community and families coming together and having fun and learning, it's definitely the place to be at Algonquin. Proctor has continued its ongoing partnership with the Parkin School in Lancaster in doing trauma-informed professional learning and development. So we met this Monday, and it's really nice to see teachers taking that and putting those practices and strategies and tools into their work with students on a daily basis. And lastly, we are starting a week-long residency with an artist next week. He's coming in to present two different folktales to our students, and then we are going to be working with him individually, class by class, in mask-making. And so we have two different kinds of masks we're going to be doing with our younger students and our older students, with lots of parent volunteers coming in, so we're really excited for that and to see those come to life over the course of the week. So busy month.
Last week at Z, Ellen Phelps put on, and the students in grades 3, 4, and 5 did a production of Annie. So the students were presented with two daytime shows, and then parents came in Thursday night and Friday night for shows, and that was a great success. Everybody had a great time. Show was beautiful. As a district, we had Professional Development Day yesterday, so staff engaged in different opportunities to kind of further their learning. We have talked a lot about Dr. Murphy here over the year in terms of some of the work that we've been doing within our buildings, and Dr. Craig Murphy presented a second half-day presentation to Northborough Elementary Schools. So we had over 100 participants yesterday with some real positive feedback about bringing in some strategies for social-emotional needs to our classrooms. March definitely seems to be the month for PTO enrichment. At Z, on March 10th, we have a Native American program coming into the building. For fifth-grade fundraiser, we have the Pancake Breakfast on Saturday, the 14th. The week of the 16th, we begin our Scholastic Spring Book Fair. And then back to our, kind of a community event, we're having the first-ever Community Climb. It's also a fifth-grade fundraiser, and students from around the district, grades 2 to 5, can experience Project Adventure. So that will be something new and different at Z. That'll be nice. And then March 24th, we have a Japanese storyteller coming in. She's going to be doing two presentations, K to 2, and then 1 to 3 to 5, and then she'll be spending an hour in grades 3, each, 4 and 5, and doing individual lessons with those grades. So she'll be spending a whole day with Physice School.
At Melikan, on Friday, our 7th graders celebrated Ancient Greece, and part of that, we had an outside presenter come in for the second year. It's called Chariot of the Sun, and it's a one-man theatrical production, which is really great because it engages a lot of students, and he retells some of the Greek myths, ancient Greek myths and... And he retells some of the Greek myths, ancient Greek myths, and the kids really love it. So it was a nice way to sort of conclude that. And prior to that, we had done some work with UDL, Universal Design for Learning. And our literacy teachers partnered with seventh-grade social studies and seventh-grade ELA to do some work there to get the kids ready for the Greek celebration. So that was really neat to see. Yesterday, we had voting here for the second time ever, and it went very well. There were no, no students here. And I did check in a couple of times, but it went really smoothly. The staff parked on the basketball courts to leave room for folks who were here to vote, so it went very, very well. Tonight, our jazz band is at Algonquin, participating in their jazz festival. Tomorrow's a half-day for us, for students, because we have parent-teacher conferences. February, our, our conferences for February were postponed until tomorrow. And then we are really excited for March 27th and 28th, which is a Friday-Saturday, at seven o'clock at Algonquin, Frozen Junior will be performed. So there's a lot of excitement there, about a hundred students are involved in that. And we generally have a packed auditorium at Algonquin on both nights, so we're looking forward to that.
For the NSPAC, they had a meeting today, so it was relatively a small meeting. So it was more of just catch-up and things like that. But their future meetings is May 6th and June 3rd. The locations and times will still be determined. And they just wanted to promote their annual Build the Distance Award Ceremony, which is coming up. It's April 14th, it's a Tuesday evening at 6:00 PM, and all are welcome. It's a really great event. I went last year, yeah, last year. And it was just, it was really great. My kids went too, and they had some things, games and things set up. Distractions and stuff. And it was just really nice to see the recognition for all the people in the community being recognized and that are helping.
The music study group has a survey that closes today. Hopefully, a lot of people have participated, but high school students, alumni, parents, guardians.
I sent it to all my old babysitters.
So that closes today. There'll be a presentation at a combined meeting coming up. And school start time committee as well will be presenting to combined at one of our future combined meetings. So lots of ideas flowing around.
So I just have a reminder that we have our annual keynote speaker on March 25th. And the author, Jessica Leahy, will be visiting our district and giving a speech or a talk about her book, The Gift of Failure, you know, How the Best Parents Learn to Let Go So Their Children Can Succeed. So we had a book study group this year, as you know. But the requirement for the keynote is not that you have read the book, so you can show up and listen as well. So that is March 25th again, at Algonquin, an auditorium, starting at 6:30.
We also have trivia night that's gonna be coming up as well?
Yes.
For whoever of us is going, I know I'm going, I don't know who else is on our team.
I think we have all, I think everyone, all.
Are all of us going?
Except Kelly's not able to.
Yeah, the, the Proctor Spring Fair, so.
I think we violated the rules last year when we had eight people on our four-member team. Yeah, it didn't help.
April 4th? This is our first Friday in April, I believe, is what it is.
Yep.
Sounds good. So Cheryl, help us get registered for that?
Yes, so I will register us for that.
And I will email out what you're gonna wear. Yes, there'll be a costume involved.
Something else I forgot to use, the Wizards. I don't know if you were gonna talk about it or not. But the Wizards are, Peaslee, PTO organizes it. And they came, I think it was two years ago. And I believe they went to all the schools. And they come to Melican too, did they come too? Do you, do they do a?
They didn't come here, but some of us participated.
Participated in this thing?
Yeah.
Would you want them there to come for that assembly, or?
I think, didn't they just do, I don't even know.
Yeah, it was, you know, it's really, it's a quick visit that just really gets the kids pumped up and excited about it. So it's about a twenty-minute.
And then it's the game.
And then that night is the game.
No, that's during the daytime.
It's during the day, they come to visit, and they talk with the kids, and they explain, you know, why they're here, and messaging behind it, you know, very positive. And then that night is the game.
Yeah, I know, I spoke with the Peaslee, and I think they were having a hard time getting ahold of the PTO for Melican. So that was just one reason.
What's the date of it? I meet with the PTO next week, so I can ask them.
Yeah, I feel like.
It's a Thursday night.
April 16th, it's a Thursday evening, seven to nine, so it would be that day, I believe, at school, Thursday.
I'll ask them, I meet with them on Wednesday.
Oh, that'd be great, yeah. And, yeah, it's, my kids, I just remember last year when they went to the day at school. They're like, why can't we go tonight? Like, they really wanted to go, but it was too late for them, like, first and. But this year, we're gonna. Are you playing on this?
I am. I'm starting this year, so. I think our first practice is next week.
So that's a nice thing that the school, you know, the school is kind of.
So next thing we have on our agenda, move forward, we have personnel items. We have a distribution of personnel report in the packets, as well as some other communications.
Question about the distribution thing, the reservations. Are those positions that are being placed? Or I'm just looking at the technology support special.
So we had a, Gail and Hammond was the Southborough Technical Person last year. And we had an unexpected person returned to that position who was on leave. So Gail went back to Northborough in his former position. And then he's actually going back to Southborough, because that person who was on leave who came back left again. So he, Gail, has that position, and we are in the process of filling that position in Northborough, yes.
And then we have communications, the FY '21 Budget Update.
Budget update.
Random. A thank-you letter to town administration for this.
So this is a thank-you to the school committee. Do you mind if I read?
Go ahead.
So it says, Dear School Committee, hello, this letter is from Peaslee Elementary School. We are fifth graders from Mrs. Danus's class and Mrs. Bailey's class. We appreciate all the things you do for our schools and would like to take the time to thank you. First of all, Peaslee Elementary School is a unique school, and we'd like to share the fun things about our school. First, we have this thing called Spree Day. On Spree Day, there are stations outside, and at each station, we play many fun games for half of the school day. We also like to go on field trips. For instance, in fourth grade, we went to the IMAX Theater at Jordan's Furniture. And after that, we went to the 135 Park in Northborough. In social studies, we learn many things, like about famous people in American history. We also learned about the American Revolution. In the American Revolution, there are famous people who gave us freedom, like George Washington, Sam Adams, John Hancock, and so many more. We are now currently learning about the government in fifth-grade social studies. We like a lot of things about Northborough, and we appreciate every single thing in this town. We also appreciate that the government protects us and uses taxes to help pay for the military. We already knew that the government makes and enforces laws. We learned a lot about our local government, like how they care about our health. We also learned how taxes help our community. In Northborough, the town hall uses taxes to pay for traffic lights and the police. We also learned that taxes help pay for parks. Most importantly, we learned that tax money helps fund our amazing schools, and you help make decisions that help our schools. We like the events in Northborough, like the Apple Fest and the tree lighting. So to end this paragraph, let's just say that we like Northborough and we learned a lot about the government. Lastly, we'd like to thank you for giving us a great teachers and great supplies. We have one question for you, though. Can you get elected into office more than once? Plus, how much do you spend on school supplies? Because a few of our desks are falling apart. So sincerely, Alice and Amy, on behalf of the entire fifth grade, so.
So yes, you can get elected more than once?
And we'll have to revisit our budget.
And we'll have to revisit our budget next year. And when you get old enough, when you're eighteen, you can run as well.
What's our line item for desk?
Look at that.
Thank you so much, we'll pass that around, have it available for people to look at. All right. So, and we have future agenda items, we'll have Proctor School Improvement Plan and PTO Update. Are there any other agenda items that anybody?
I don't know what we want to talk about. I know we've talked a little bit about possibly revamping some things real quick next year, whether it be a time change or location change, things like that.
The school committee meeting.
The school committee meetings. So I don't know when we want to put that on the agenda.
All right, sounds good. We'll review that when we review the agendas for next month. Approval of bills and payrolls and any other business which may legally come before the committee. Our next scheduled Northborough School Committee meeting is Wednesday, April 1st. And then we'll have a combined school committee meeting on Wednesday, March 18th. And that's all we have on our agenda this evening. I move to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor? And great, motion to adjourn, have a good night.